I have a bit of a significance here. It must be very new.
Yeah.
Pastor Langel, did you have a?
Yes, your worship. Yeah, Ken, that's an excellent presentation and I've been following the Shriners for some time and you guys do absolutely amazing work and it's one of those organizations that I imagine you and your members sleep very well at night. I was especially impressed that you take all the expenses in visiting the various lodges out of your own pocket and a lot of your travel. That is really commendable. So don't ask Phil Mooney to be a member.
Just warning you.
It was quite funny. Last night, I was browsing on YouTube and I used to be in a band in Toronto. It was called De La Salle, Drum and Bulecore. And unbeknownst to me, because I was just a kid then, that was 50 years ago, Shriners International were the big sponsors of all the competitions. So when I saw that, that was quite amazing. So I went from the drum corps line to the Shriners line, having a ball.
You mentioned Lofty Porter. When Lofty passed away, there was an auction at the Grand Hotel of his possessions. And amongst it was a box, which had all kinds of great stuff, because I was teaching law at the time. He was, as you know, spent a time in Scotland Yard. So there were the old British handcuffs and stuff like this that were in there. So when the point came for the auction, I said, "I'm never going to get this." And Dave Hall, one of your members, was there at the auction. He was anxious to get it because it's lofty stuff. And the auctioneer, who was a little bit of a clown, stood up and says he held up this pair of handcuffs. "Anybody here into kinky stuff?" he made a comment. He said, "Anybody going to enter a bid?" Well, nobody in the room dared to enter the bid. Well, I'd entered a bid of $5. Got the box. Why I'm mentioning it to you, in there were three pins of Shriners. There were three pins, very elaborate pins with ivory and jewels on them. Sometime I might pop them down to you. You might take a look at them. Because they were lofty's pins at the time and maybe some of the gentlemen may find a bit of interest in them.
It will explain the handcuffs. We used to be part of the Keystone Cops.
Yeah, that explains it. Well, these ones were the old British key style. So I think they were left over from Lofty Scott, because his badge from Scotland Yard was in the lot too.
You've probably seen us in our little fire truck. That was originally from the Yarmouth Fire Department. They had it built years and years ago. Didn't use it. So we got it from them for a dollar. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Clear Ocean Action Committee, Mr. Berry.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Welcome, Bernie.
Okay. Afternoon, everyone. My name's Bernie Berry.
Wait one second. Are you all good? Anybody need to leave yet? Good to go.
Good. Okay. My name's Bernie Berry and I'm president of the Cold Water Lobster Association and we're part of COAC, the Clean Ocean Actions Committee. And the reason we're here today, the reason we're here today, to see if we can get a letter of support from the council in a couple of areas that we're trying to achieve. One is taking number three and number four lease sites, potential lease sites, oil lease sites, completely off the table. Because they're so close to such sensitive fishing areas, some of the most lucrative fishing areas in the world, completely off the table. And the other thing we'd like support from is the oil industry, if there is a spill, we want a proper cleanup plan in place, which they do not have. Their cleanup plan basically consists of chemicals, Corexit mainly. The other options they have, booms and all this kind of stuff, simply doesn't work where they are. Most of the other stuff outside of chemicals, like the booms or the skimmers, doesn't work in over one-meter seas. And where they're drilling, or potentially where they're going to be drilling along the scotching shelf, that doesn't work. So listen, we realize as a fishing industry, we have to coexist with the oil industry now. But there has to be certain no-go zones, mainly three and four. Three, for example, basically borders on Browns Bank. Browns Bank's a lobster nursery. That lobster nursery has the bread and butter of this area here. Just to put some value in the lobster fishery in this area, in 2014, or yes, 2014 numbers, 2015 numbers aren't in yet, but 54 million pound of lobsters were landed from Back Road to Burns Point on Digny Neck, was somewhere around $300 million of landed value. Actually, the fishing industry, according to the province, in 2015 had expanded to $1.6 billion in value. And the problem is, if there is an oil spill, because of the tidal action down in that area in particular, where most of the, especially on a flood tide, which would bring any kind of leakage, any kind of spill up into the Gulf of Maine, Bay of Fundy, and it would disperse it over an incredible area so fast that you wouldn't be able to have a response. Because a tide would carry that, probably 20 to 30 miles per tide. You're talking a six-hour event. There's no way you could keep up with a spill. Okay? So we have to be very careful where we allow the drilling to happen. They're drilling now in the Shelburne Basin or whatever. That area might be okay because of the tidal action. If there is something that goes wrong, the tide will take possibly most of that stuff off into the Atlantic. Maybe the Gulf Stream will pick it up. And it's probably not going to be good for Europe.
How far is that off the coast, Bert?
Pardon me?
How far would that Shelburne Basin be off the coast?
I think it's southeast of Halifax, 225 kilometers and stuff like that. It's actually in very deep water. And actually, if I can go back to, if you want to call it an accident or a thing that happened three weeks ago when they lost their pipe there, let's be honest, we got very lucky. Because we could be having a totally different conversation here if that had happened, when they broke into the oil cavity and stuff like that and oil had got out. I mean, where they're drilling right now is really at the limit of their technology. They're in 2,000 meters of water. They've got to go through another 4,000 meters of bedrock. And as smart as these guys are, that accident, we believe, was just caused by miscalculations. I mean, we think they had the wrong type of drill ship as massive it is. They should have had basically a rig there to accommodate the high seas. I mean, really, that incident was caused from a storm, 40-foot swells and stuff like that. Really, the pipe disengaged from the vessel. It was supposed to, but they miscalculated how intense an area, how big waves can get in that area. And now you're sitting there with 2,000 meters of pipe on the bottom. I'm not sure if they're going to retrieve it or can retrieve it. Because when that pipe went to bottom, a lot of the flotation devices that would have helped in the retrieval come off. Not just nine pieces, most of it come off. Like this has been reported in the media, the starter phone and stuff like that. But again, I guess instead of getting into the oil drill in itself, is the potential that it could have on the decimation of the fishing industry. And it's just not, the thing of it is, it's just not, you know, the death toll that could occur in the lobster, scallop, or the larva and stuff like that. Listen, we're so electronically connected today, and I'm going to talk about markets. If we have an oil spill, say in three and four, that's very close to Browns Bank or whatever, and it gets in the media, which it will, I mean, it's just, within 24 hours, you could potentially see a lot of these borders, markets, China, South Korea, whatever, just simply close the border to our product. A perfect case in point is roughly a year ago, in Alberta, they discovered a cow. Remember, seven years ago, they had the mad cow scare out there. Okay, since then, they've been doing their due diligence and stuff like that. And they found an animal, a cow, in the pasture. He hadn't got into the system yet, but he tested for mad cow disease. That got into the system within, what did, within 24 hours, South Korea had closed the borders to imported Canadian beef, which they've just opened up. Japan cut imported beef, I think from Canada, by 50 percent. The same thing would happen with seafood. It's just not that the die-off, it's just you would not have any markets.
I've got a question, and probably, we're not going to give Bernie his due diligence, because I think this is a conversation that's going to be longer than a 10-minute presentation. Because when he's talking about $1.6 billion and what the lobster, and everybody's sitting around this table and everybody in the audience, and you'd ask anybody on Main Street in Yarmouth, or you go to the Red Cap in Publico, or you go up the line, everybody knows the importance of the lobster fishery to southwestern Nova Scotia. They made a very important announcement on the boat today, but if you took the lobster industry out of southwestern Nova Scotia, you might as well forget about the boat and anything else that we have to do. Because this is what makes southwestern Nova Scotia what southwest Nova Scotia is. I've got another question. The area that you're talking about, right, that you say you would like to have protected or no drilling off that, what percentage would that be of the total area that people from this end of the province can fish? Like, is it 4%, 5%, 10%, 15%? Is it, it would be a small fraction, I would think.
It would be a small fraction, because actually where three and four is, and that's the ones we're asking for, three and four has a major impact on, say, the tuna fishery and the swordfish longline fishery, because it's surface fisheries. And along that edge, that's where most of that, and part of the George's Bank area, that's where most of that fishery, them two fisheries, are conducted. The problem is where they're buttoned up against our lobster fishery, our closed areas, like on Browns and stuff like that. That area's been closed for 40 or 50 years. Nobody fishes there. It's just not permitted and stuff like that. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's offshore, the clearwater boats can't go there. None of the license holders from Halifax to the main shoreline is allowed there. And again, I can't put a percentage on it. I think three and four, you probably don't have a lot of certainly lobster boats there, but it's where it's buttoned up. It's so sensitive. Again, the document that I give to, I think Lyndon Hopes, she distributed and everybody read it, is, we're trying to use basically the Norway model. I mean, listen, Norway's very heavy into oil and gas and stuff like that. They still have a very lucrative fishing industry. And they basically have no-go zones there, as far as when it comes to drilling for oil and stuff like that, if it's buttoned up or a buffer zone for a very sensitive fishing area. It's just not permitted. And we're trying to basically take the same approach. There are some areas, again, like I said earlier, we have to, I guess we have to coexist with the oil industry, fine. But there's got to be certain no-go zones. Because it would just simply decimate the fishing industry if something happened.
Well, plus, the other thing is, if you took, your worship, what the number that Bernie used was 1.6 billion, how many people that affects in southwestern Nova Scotia by the time you talk to the guys that go on the boats, the guys that truck the lobsters, the guys that work in the paddles, the guys that sell the people the insurance for the boats, the oil people and all the other things. And you took that amount of money out of this community, or what the government was going to get on, $1.6 billion worth of oil royalties, I don't think there's a comparison. The $1.6 billion for the fishing industry is what we want to keep here. So anything that will impact the fishing industry, we got to support. We've got to support our fishermen. And I don't know how we would go about looking at the, I'm in full support with you, Bernie. I think we've got to protect the industry here. And...
...Lobster Association and we're part of Co-Act that cleans ocean actions committee. And the reason we're here today. Okay, the reason we're here today to see if we can get a letter of support from the council in a couple of areas that we're trying to achieve. One is taking number three and number four lease sites, potential lease sites, oil lease sites, completely off the table because they're so close to such sensitive fishing areas, the most, some of the most lucrative fishing areas in the world, completely off the table. And another, the other thing we'd like support from is the oil industry, if there is a spill, we want a proper cleanup plan in place, which they do not have. Their cleanup plan basically consists of chemicals, core exit mainly. The other options they have, booms and all this kind of stuff, simply doesn't work where they are. Most of the other stuff outside of chemicals like the booms or the skimmers doesn't work in over one meter seas. And where they're drilling, or potentially where they're going to be drilling along the scotching shelf, that doesn't work. So, listen, we realize as a fishing industry, we have to coexist with the oil industry now, but there has to be certain no-go zones, mainly three and four. Three, for example, basically borders on Browns Bank. Browns Bank's a lobster nursery. That lobster nursery has the bread and butter of this area here. Just to put some value in the lobster fishery in this area, in 2014, or yes, 2014 numbers, 2015 numbers aren't in yet, but 54 million pound of lobsters were landed from Back Road to Burns Point on Digny Neck was somewhere around $300 million of landed value. Actually, the fishing industry, according to the province, in 2015 had expanded to $1.6 billion in value. And the problem is, if there is an oil spill, because of the tidal action down in that area in particular, where most of the, especially on a flood tide, which would bring any kind of leakage, any kind of spill up into the Gulf of Maine, Bay of Fundy, and it would disperse it over an incredible area so fast that you wouldn't be able to have a response because a tide would carry that probably 20 to 30 miles per tide. You're talking a six-hour event. There's no way you could keep up with a spill. Okay? So, we have to be very careful where we allow the drilling to happen. They're drilling now in the Shelburne Basin or whatever. That area might be okay because of the tidal action. If there is something that goes wrong, the tide will take possibly most of that stuff off into the Atlantic. Maybe the Gulf Stream will pick it up and it's probably not going to be good for Europe.
How far is that off the coast, Bernie?
Pardon me?
How far would that Shelburne Basin be off the coast?
I think it's south, southeast of Halifax, 225 kilometers and stuff like that. It's actually in very deep water. And actually, if I could go back to, if you want to call it an accident or a thing that happened three weeks ago when they lost their pipe there, let's be honest, we got very lucky because we could be having a totally different conversation here if that had happened when they broke into the oil cavity and stuff like that and oil had got out. I mean, where they're drilling right now is really at the limit of their technology. They're in 2,000 meters of water. They've got to go through another 4,000 meters of bedrock. And as smart as these guys are, that accident, we believe, was just caused by miscalculations. I mean, we think they had the wrong type of drill ship as massive it is. They should have had a, basically a rig there to accommodate the high seas. I mean, really, that incident was caused from a storm, 40-foot swells and stuff like that. Really, the pipe disengaged from the vessel. It, you know, it was supposed to, but they miscalculated how, how intense in an area, how big, you know, waves can get in that area. And now, now you're sitting there with 2,000 meters of pipe on the bottom. I'm not sure if they're going to retrieve it or can retrieve it. Because when that, when that pipe went to bottom, a lot of the flotation devices that would have helped in the retrieval come off. Not just nine pieces, most of it come off, like this has been reported in the media, the starter phone and stuff like that. But again, I, I guess instead of getting into the, the oil drill in itself, is the potential that it could have on the decimation of the fishing industry. And it's just not, the thing of it is, it's just not, you know, the death toll that could occur in the lobster, scallop, or the larva and stuff like that. Listen, we're so electronically connected today, and I'm going to talk about markets. If we have an oil spill, say in three and four, that's very close to Browns Bank or whatever, and it gets in the media, which it will, I mean, it's just, within 24 hours, you could potentially see a lot of these borders, markets, China, South Korea, whatever, just simply close the border to our, to our product. A perfect case in point is roughly a year ago in Alberta, they discovered a cow, remember seven years ago, they had the mad cow scare out there? Okay, since then, they've been doing their due diligence and stuff like that. And they, they found an animal, a cow, in the pasture. He hadn't got into the system yet, but he tested for mad cow disease. That got into the system within, what did, within 24 hours, South Korea had closed the borders to imported Canadian beef, which they've just opened up. Japan cut imported beef, I think, by, from Canada, by 50%. The same thing would happen with seafood. It's just not that the die-off, it's just you would not have any markets.
Well, I got a question and probably, we're not going to give Bernie his due diligence because I think this is a conversation that's going to be longer than a 10-minute presentation because when he's talking about $1.6 billion and what the loss, and everybody's sitting around this table and everybody in the audience, and you have to ask anybody on Main Street in Yarmouth, or you go to the Red Cap in Publica, or you go up the line, everybody knows the importance of the lobster fishery to southwestern Nova Scotia. They made a very important announcement on the boat today, but if you took the lobster industry out of southwestern Nova Scotia, you might as well forget about the boat and anything else that we have to do because this is what makes southwestern Nova Scotia what southwestern Nova Scotia is. I got another question. Is, the area that you're talking about, right, that you say you would like to have protected or no drilling off that, what, what percentage would that be of the total area that people from this end of the province can fish? Like, is it 4%, 5%, 10%, 15%? Is it? It would be, it would be a small fraction, I would think.
It would be a small fraction because actually where three and four is, and that's the ones we're asking for, three and four has a major impact on, say, the tuna fishery and the swordfish longline fishery because it's surface fisheries. And along that edge, that's where most of that, and, and part of the George's Bank area, that's where most of that fishery, them two fisheries are conducted. The problem is where they're buttoned up against our lobster fishery, or our closed areas like on Browns and stuff like that. That, that area's been closed for 40 or 50 years. Nobody fishes there. It's just not permitted and stuff like that. I mean, doesn't matter if it's offshore, the clearwater boats can't go there. None of the license, license holders from Halifax to, to the main shoreline is allowed there. And again, I can't put a percentage on it. I think three and four, you probably don't have a lot of certainly lobster boats there, but it's where it's buttoned up. It's so sensitive. Again, the document that I, I give to, I think Linda and Hope she, distributor and everybody read it, is, is, we're trying to use basically the Norway model. I mean, listen, Norway's very heavy into oil and, and gas and stuff like that, but they still have a very lucrative fishing industry. And they basically have no-go zones there as far as when it comes to drilling for oil and stuff like that, if it's, if it's buttoned up or a buffer zone for a very sensitive fishing area. It's just not permitted. And we're trying to basically take the same approach that there's some areas, again, like I said earlier, we have to, I guess we have to coexist with the oil industry, fine, but there's got to be certain no-go zones because it would just simply decimate the fishing industry if something happened.
Well, plus, the other thing is, if you took, your worship, what the, what the number that Bernie used was 1.6 billion, how many people that affects in southwestern Nova Scotia by the time you talk to the, the guys that go on the boats, the guys that truck the lobsters, the guys that work in the paddles, the guys that sell the people the insurance for the boats, the oil people and all the other things? And you took that amount of money out of this community or what the government was going to get on $1.6 billion worth of oil royalties? I don't think there's a comparison of the 1.6 billion for the fishing industry is what we want to keep here. So, anything that will impact the fishing industry, we got to support, we got to support our fishermen. And I don't know how we would go about looking at the, I'm, I'm in full support with you, Bernie. I think we got to protect the industry here. And I don't know if it's today the day, but if, if we make a motion for that, I don't know what that would entail. What's, what's the timeline that, that you're looking at, Bernie? That's the thing I'm asking.
A lot of this stuff, listen, we're learning as we go. When I first approached Mayor Moot about this back in, I think it was February, I think, there is an upcoming Petroleum Board meeting in April. At that time, we, we hadn't understand that there might be a lease, you know, somebody would nominate a thing for that time. But from, since then, we understand that three and four might be off the table for at least the year of 2016. But we still like to get something in place or support in place at the meeting in April and stuff like that.
So, yeah, so we have, we have a motion on the, later today, on this agenda, to invite the Petroleum Board here to present.
Absolutely.
You should probably be, be here for that. Yeah, yeah.
And I got only one question, and I saw, it was something I saw in the paper today, Bernie, the one in, I think it was the Chronicle Herald about the lobster, was it Sweden?
Yep.
What's the story on that? Give me a quick, a quick two minute, one-minute answer.
As obscure as that might appear, that could be devastating. Somehow, 30, 35 lobsters over the last eight years, you know, our lobsters, the American lobster, Canadian lobster, has been, somebody has either thrown, thrown them off a cruise ship or decided before they wanted to cook them over there, they got a heart and chucked them back in the ocean. So, Norway had actually banned import of Canadian lobsters, but they're a very small importer. Since then, there's been negotiations going on that I think, you know, with some of our exporters, that the Norway problem's going to be taken care of. But then Sweden picked up this and they really took it to the next level. They presented a 84-page presentation to the EU where they wanted all Canadian lobster products banned. And there will be a decision from what I'm led to believe in sometime in June. Everybody's on board trying to prevent this. I mean, from all the, on the American side to Canadian side, scientists, politicians, you know, DFO International, Global Affairs is all involved because as much as you hear about China importing our lobsters, I mean, that market's exploding. The only problem is, is right now, Europe still imports more lobsters than China does. So, it'd be devastating. You're probably talking somewhere in the range of 140 to 50 million dollars worth of lobsters into Europe still. It's still, behind the US, it's still the second biggest market we have. China will overtake it, yes, eventually. The other thing with the European markets, it's usually a high-end market because it is mostly live product. The southern part of Europe, Spain, Italy and that, it's still live product, a little lower-end product. A lot of the American companies focus on that, but it would be, I don't know, devastating because I don't know where you'd go with them all. You couldn't take them to processing or nothing like that. And the value you'd lose because that's a high-end market. And that's how, like I said, there's, there's a lot to this. I mean, one little thing, 30 lobsters and the country's got it in their mind that somehow them lobsters are going to, because the European lobster's a little bit different than ours. Not much, but there is a little difference. And they think there's going to be some kind of transfer of diseases or something. And scientists, at least on both sides, of the Canadians and the Americans, don't believe this could happen. So, hopefully, the message will get through and when the decision is put forth in, in June, it's favorable on our side.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, yeah. Gary, is it Gary?
Bernie.
Bernie, Bernie, yeah. Bernie, what kind of support have you got from the local fishery, from the lobster fishery and ground fishery? Is there different organizations that, that are supporting you? And I got a twofold question. And three and four, what makes you think that they're not going to be looking for, they would drill on, on district three and four?
Oh, they're not.
This year?
The thing of it is, if you look at the chart.
I haven't got my glasses. I've got them on.
Anyway, on that chart, there was nine lease sites, I think, potentially put out last year that, you know, bids could be accepted on or, or the industry could make nominations for these sites. Well, last year, unfortunately, and we've got accepted blame here, we were asleep at the wheel and, and a nomination and a bid process had gone out for one and two. And I think there has been a bid accepted for one and two from Stad Oil, which is, I think, a Norwegian company.
But that was heavily politicized, though.
Again, this is our fault.
Yeah.
Right? And, but three and four, now, one and two, even one and two, even though that they have lease sites there, again, the tidal action is outside of the George's gyro tidal effect. So, hopefully, if something does happen there, fingers crossed, that everything goes off into the Atlantic, okay? Three and four is so critical. Now, some of the other stuff going up, six, seven, five, six, seven and eight, again, it's out of our backyard, but we might have to take a look at that, too, based on a lot of.
Is that up, is that, three and four, is that up by the hole?
Yes.
Up around that area there?
Actually, actually, three, for example, not only borders on Browns Bank, but it borders on the coral box that, they took 10 years to close because it's a massive area of undersea coral and stuff like this. And again, if, if anything happens there, it's phenomenal, what the effects it's going to have on the fishery. And four is a little bit of, going to the, I'll say, the northeast of three.
Is that around George's?
No, it's a little farther up. Three actually comes down and just, it's getting close to the moratorium area on George's.
Okay.
Like, these are fairly expansive areas. They don't look big on, like a, like a small chart or anything, but.
On the, okay, so that's, that border, there's, there's that imaginary line. I, I used to work for fisheries. I'm an ex-fishery officer, but used to patrol them, these imaginary lines. And it's, we used to patrol the American line, that's what we called it.
Yep.
The American line. So, on the, on the American side, what is their take on, on drilling? Are they, are they looking for, for drilling on that side? Are they protecting that area?
No, actually, no. As far as I understand it, at least on the, the American side on George's, they have a moratorium in place until, I think, 2022, which has got to be renewed, just like ours. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, and listen, I could be, I thought here just a while back, President Obama come out and, and basically.
That was a year, a year ago, yeah, I think so.
Put a thing on all east coast drilling outside of.
Well, wasn't, didn't the Nova Scotia government, didn't they, they weren't in favor of drilling off there? They want to have a moratorium on it for?
No, I mean, the, George's Bank has a moratorium.
Mor, that's what it is, okay.
Yeah, that's still in place for our side, right?
Okay, okay, so that's, that's what it must be. I get, getting it kind of mixed up. So, you said you had different organizations?
Yep.
That, that are in favor of not drilling in three and four, or drilling period outside there?
Yep, three and four mainly.
And your organizations, they're, they're chartered organizations?
Yep.
They're registered organizations?
Basically, between our organization and LFA 34 Advisory, they're involved here, LFA 33 Advisory, three or four Maritime Fishmen Union locals, groundfish groups, the Scotia Fundy, the Nova Scotia Fish Packers, Acadian Fish.
Where, where are we with the federal, federal side board?
The federal, I think we're going to make more progress on the federal side than we are provincial, to be very honest with you.
I hope so.
Because I, I actually think, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but I think, let's be honest, the province is in such hard shape, they've just got blinders on.
Well, they'll be in harder shape if anything goes wrong out there.
Well, unfortunately, we're not looking at that. Well, I mean, the frustrating part is, we don't even have our Minister of Fisheries in Nova Scotia speaking up for us. Michael Sampson, the Energy Minister's doing the talking.
Shame on him.
So, I don't feel all fuzzy and warm about that.
No. And maybe, maybe we should be looking at, after we get, get the more information on what you're doing, what your organization is doing, I hope you keep us briefed on what's happening, what's taking place. Like, the mayor just said, we, we're going to be making, passing a motion here. If it passes, to invite the Petroleum Board. They're having a meeting here in Yarmouth. I'm sure you're going to attend that meeting? I would think you would be there. Yeah, so anyway, we're going to probably have a sit-down meeting with them, but that, all, all that is just a meeting to see, same as what you're doing. Anyway, thank you for your, for your, for your time and presentation and your answers.
So, so Bernie, we don't make decisions here to do that, but I think everybody at the table pretty much agrees that we need more information. I'm just thinking, when the Petroleum Board comes, if you, they'll come to talk to us specifically and, and that you could come in, we could clear up a lot, get as much information to us in the meantime.
Yep.
And together with what you provided today and the stuff that Linda has sent out, because there's a lot of questions and, and I think, you know, we need to protect the fishery, but we want to make sure we do it, do it right.
We've got a month for it, you know?
Yeah. And, and.
Well, actually, you could actually, you could actually even have more because, like I said earlier, we had learned that, see, the industry can make nominations on these sites at any time. But then, now we understand it takes a process, maybe seven, eight months and stuff like that. The problem is, we don't want to, we want to start buttin' heads with them before they even make a nomination.
Yeah.
Because, because once you start down the process, sometimes it's awful hard to haul it back in.
Yeah.
And like I said, I don't think at least three and four is on the table for 216, but potentially 217 and stuff like that. But again, the sooner the better that we can take this on before it gets any further down the road. Because like I said, industry can make a nomination at any time, but again, they'll have to wait.
So, so April's not that, that drop-dead deadline, but it is to get ahead of the game?
Yes, it is.
Exactly.
And do we know when the Petroleum presentation's going to be made?
Well, we're going to, we'll just suggest, Linda will just get ahold of them and have them come in, but it doesn't necessarily have to be before, before next month. So, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. That was great.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we? Okay, good. CAO report.
Is there?
Mm-hmm.
I haven't heard that. I'm here. I believe.
Any, are we good? Okay. Counselor Landau?
Yes, your worship, just glancing at this, well done, Mr. Guxu, nice report. I noticed that on page one of six, item two, Recommendation Committee of the Whole, March 5th, 2013, that the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission transfer the assets to the Aragala Yarmouth Medical Services Society and Mayor Moot be authorized to sign the inter-municipal services agreement. That has been signed, I trust, has it?
Or am I?
Because there was a target date of 24th September as due date. So, I'm assuming that's not been signed, not signed yet? Okay, good.
Good, thank you.
Just, I can, yeah, so, that has not been signed yet. We did approve that, but it is an inter-municipal agreement. And when the three parties discussed it, and this has been going on, as you can see, since 2013, when the parties discussed the model that was presented there, it wasn't necessarily the model that we, with sober second thought, were, were agreeable to. So, we talked about the, the REN model as being perhaps more appropriate. The way the agreement, or that agreement was written was not, was not that same model. So, to answer your question, there's been no, no clear consensus or direction on exactly how we want to deal with the medical clinics. We talked about at the Industrial Commission where they, where they now sit. And as you know, there's lots going on in the commission that, in terms of the DOMTAX and so on, the question is, I guess, whether it's going to stand alone, be a separate corporate entity or dealt with in some other way.
Good. Okay, anything else for the CAO? Fire Department report, welcome chief. Any questions for the, for our fire chief? That was easy.
Yeah, there's a report. Yes, you do that.
Good. Planning Department. Now, Caroline, we were going to add something, and we'll just add it under your report. I don't know if it was, is this the cash fare on there or the?
There were two recommendations that came out of the Transit Steering Committee meeting yesterday that were, that I'd like to add.
Okay. Are they, they're not on this, are they? I don't see them. So, is everybody okay with us adding these?
They're separate.
Yeah, they are separate, but we didn't, we didn't put them on the agenda. So, we'll put transit fare as C and D will be bus route change.
As additions.
As additions. Yeah, C and D. Okay, good. So, any questions for Caroline? Everything's moving fast. Everything's going great.
Under, under the agenda, we've put the bus shelter request.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll just talk to the three items about the bus. So, at the February 18th council meeting, council approved a motion that staff be directed to develop a concept for interactive and interpretive bus shelters and investigate alternative ways to fund these. So, I have written a report, which you should have in front of you, on a whole bunch of examples of how this has been done in other places. The idea is really, it's about placemaking and creating something kind of different that draws attention. The users don't even primarily have to be people who are taking the bus. It's just about drawing attention to the community and, and something good that's happening. I've done some cost analysis and I'm thinking they might cost about $10,000 each, proposing that we do three shelters first. I'd like to do the stop at the Yarmouth Mall parking lot across the street in front of Royal Bank on Main Street and the Yarmouth Hospital as top priority stops for shelters. I've proposed that council fund one of these, kind of get the ball, get the ball rolling. And then, I'm going to be looking for private sponsors or grant opportunities to fund the remainder, the other two. I have been in contact with the principal at the Nova Scotia Community College and Mary is very, very interested in seeing how the students can contribute to this project. We talked about how we can bring in different disciplines, whether it's to do a design competition for the shelters or to have them actually cost them out and build them for us. So, I'm going to be meeting with her to see how we can continue with that concept. Part of this proposal, I've also written in a number of criteria that all of the shelters should have so that we remain consistent and that they provide users with this, with a similar experience. So, that's there as well. And what I'm looking from council for today is just to see if they're okay with this plan, if this is how they want to move forward, and if you're interested in funding the first shelter.
I'll make a motion that we put a costing for a bus shelter in the 2016, 2017 budget process. And I think, your worship, just to talk to the.
You refer to budget.
Refer to budget, yeah. And the conversation we had at the table yesterday, myself, Counselor Mackay-Zach, Counselor Landau, Natalie was there, Caroline, and there's other avenues, too, that the town can look into through Department of Administrative Affairs and some of their infrastructure, transportation spending. And also, I think we're going to be arranging in the next couple of weeks a meeting with Jason Devou and/or Colin Fraser, a member of parliament, to see if there's any money for any of these infrastructure improvements in our transportation or the bus, the bus system. So, there's going to be other avenues to try to find some revenue to help alleviate some of the costs of the shelter.
Mm-hmm. Works. Okay, any more action? Counselor Dennis?
Caroline, in the, oh, in the, on the second last page of the proposal, the design standards, it doesn't include accessibility features in that one? So, I was just wondering if we could add that. I think what happened is maybe the, the extended floor is in there twice.
Yeah, that would be a mistake. It was, that's, it's mentioned in the front page that that's of high priority. And actually, at the Transit Steering Committee yesterday, they mentioned that it'd be important that it be safe for children as well, not just that it be accessible to people in wheelchairs and seniors, but also to children. So, I'll make sure that that's clear.
And the other thing is, for visually impaired, it would be good if you checked to see, because, only because I have visually impaired coming into the store, and they find that the white line in the front instead of yellow is much better for them to see. So, I think maybe we could check to make sure with visually impaired if that's a fact. But I just know from coming into the store that they're grateful for a white line rather than a yellow.
Yeah, that should be an easy thing to find out. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good. Any more discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Anything else for Caroline? Good. Counselor Mackay-Zach?
Are we going to, Caroline, are you looking for a motion for the, for the other two? Are they coming up later?
You just added them to the additions, yeah.
Oh, the additions, okay, yeah.
Do you want to speak to those now? Should you want to do that? We can move them up. Nobody disagrees with that. Okay, so let's do the amend transit bus fare first. Nobody disagrees with that. Okay, so let's do the amend transit bus fare first. Want to explain that? Because Counselor Mooney explained it to me, because I didn't agree until he explained it.
So we've received a lot of feedback from the public that they would like us to be able to take cash on the system, the, the bus system as they're boarding. That wasn't the original intent. The intent was that we hoped people would get used to the smart cards. There's a lot of costs associated with being able to manage cash. That being said, at the committee meeting yesterday, what was decided was that we would be interested in accepting cash, but we would like to charge per ride, and it's a little bit higher. So to kind of discourage regular users from paying with cash. But if you do get on and you'd like, and you don't know that the system's smart fare, you do have an option to pay cash. So this recommendation is that we set a fee of $2 per ride for users that wish to pay cash.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, Your Worship, that council accept the recommendation from the Transit Steering Committee, that the Towne Yarmouth Transit Service fare schedule be amended to include a $2 cash fare per ride for passengers who wish to board, wish to board the transit bus without smart card passes. And this would be effective April the 11th, I believe. Is that the date we settled? April the 4th? Was that the date we decided, Monday the 4th?
I don't think we decided for the cash. That was for the other, the other recommendation. So I think what was decided was that as quickly as we can put together the system, there might be some logistics to work out. As quickly as we can make that happen, we will do it.
Good. Did you have your, you're good? Moved and seconded? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? You're supposed to speak to, for discussion.
I tried.
I didn't.
It's all right.
Your light was off.
It was on before, but then I...
Oh, okay.
I'm really excited about this cash fare because, and I wanted to, I'm glad other people brought it up. As everyone knows, my busiest time of the year is always in, in February, when I'm not, when I'm not, when I'm in Ontario. And that leaves my vehicle sitting here unused for weeks. And I came back to a very, very weakened battery. And my car wouldn't start. I was in the, in a shopping mall. And I thought, what am I going to do? I'm not going to walk home. And I thought of taking the bus, but I thought, I can't because I don't have any money. And at that time, Lawton's was, I don't think Lawton's was selling, Lawton's was not selling, selling fare, bus passes then. So I'm really, really, really pleased with this.
Good. Okay, and the other one was, yeah, are you, did we not vote on that? Go ahead.
Yeah, just on the math, it works out to $1.74 plus H S T. So we'll change that when this comes to council, just so it works out.
Okay, so the change to the bus route is the next one. Did you want to speak to that?
Sure.
It's pretty basic.
It is, and it only makes about a minute and a half difference to the route. We've, we've received a lot of feedback from the residents on Havlock Drive that they would really like to be users of the system, but that they found it difficult to walk to the stop that had been, that had been decided for Argyle Street. So as being able to provide a good service to housing that receives subsidies was a priority for the Transit Advisory Committee, we felt that some of these proposed route changes would help us meet that goal and also be positive in light of some of the comments that we had received from the public. So what we're recommending is that the bus go down Havlock Drive and that there be a stop on Havlock Drive. It detours, so it won't run that portion of Argyle Street anymore. And then we're also proposing that the bus go up Forbes Street, down Kemp Street, and be able to stop in front of the seniors home at Churchill Manor. Yeah. So I think there's, that was something I was supposed to bring up. There's a little error in the map. It was created very quickly after the, the meeting. So the stop that was put there isn't in the right place. It's supposed to be in front of Churchill Manor. So just so that's clear, that, that was the intent of that route change.
Good, thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to make a motion that, that the council accept the recommendation of the Yarmouth Transit Steering Committee, that we add addition, that we change the route to go down, down Havlock Drive and to allow flagging to occur on Havlock Drive for transit system. And further, that we agree to a stop being placed in front of 41 Main Street in Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Wait a second, go ahead.
Just a question to Chad. Chad, I took a drive up through that route that we talked about yesterday, the Havlock. And coming off of Havlock, if my recollection is right, there's a bus stop to the right. Should it be moved down further on Argyle Street where the bus is now going to come and stop at, on Argyle and Havlock? You're going to come from the hill to come down. And there's a bus stop up above, before you come down Argyle Street. Now you're going the other way.
That's right.
And that stop sign is on the up, up, up that way. And it's going to miss, the bus would have to back up or whatever to pick up the passenger. So would that, you're going to change that?
That'll be changed, yeah. That stop will essentially be eliminated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. That's what I, I just had noticed it yesterday, and I'm sure that you're right on. So you knew all about it anyway. So, great, thank you.
Counselor Landau?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think this, these stops are long overdue. I've had some queries from residents on Havlock, and they are a little bit concerned. We do have a number of seniors up there and people who are handicapped, and this is going to offer a wonderful service to residents in the Havlock Drive area, which is wonderful. So I want to commend Chad and Caroline for their hard work on this, and it's nice to see this come into fruition, and encourage my colleagues to support the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Operational Services report. Any questions for our engineer? Go ahead.
Thank you. Dave, how's the, is there any more word on the, the stoplights on, on Stars Road? The four-way stop that we've got, the stop signs there? Is there any more work on that, Jeff? Have we decided what we're going to, we're still, are we still waiting for more information on that?
Yeah, we are, bud. Yeah, go ahead.
So the direction was to redo counts at a more opportune time. So that's what we'll do. So there's no new information on that at this point.
Okay, I forgot. I know there, we had mentioned we were going to do another survey on that?
Yes.
The driving surveys?
Traffic counts.
Traffic counts, okay, great. Thank you, Dave.
Any more questions for the engineer? Good. Finance? Jerry, how we doing?
Well, you may have noticed a few auditors walking around this week. They're back and preparing for our year end, doing some preliminary work. I continue to work on the fine tuning some of the budget and some options there. As the days go by, each, each couple of days, I get more requests of things in the budget. So we'll have a long list of things to consider on that. And been working, but I do have all the information back from the other directors. So all that information's being compiled. And continue to work on the capital budget as well.
Good. Any questions? Oh, go ahead.
Maybe a question is going to be combined to Your Worship and to Jeff and to Jerry and Dave and Caroline and maybe the chief. After Tuesday's federal budget, I know there's going to be a major influx of money into infrastructure across the country. We're going to be doing our capital budget. Are we going to sit down as the C A O and the directors of the town and try to have some input, maybe with our Member of Parliament or with his assistant, Jason, to see what we can access and to see what they are actually targeting or lasering for? I know they're doing a lot of water infrastructure. They're going to say they're going to do the unsexy things like streets and sewers. So are we going to have an opportunity to sit down as a collective group and ask our Member of Parliament directed questions on, on what we can expect? I think Counselor Mckayzick did that when we had the group of three councils here, when Colin was here. And now that we know, because at that time, remember Danny or Counselor Mckayzick, Colin didn't know the amount of money that was going to be in the, in the budget. And he said, that's a good question for when the budget is brought down. So now that we know the number, we have to have a conversation with our federal counterparts to see what we have to spend and what we could match up dollar for dollar with those guys.
So he knows in answer to that, partial answer to that. He knows we're coming.
Yeah, good.
And, and, and he's ready for us. We just have to form, formulate our questions. We have to figure out what we're after.
If you had the municipalities across the province too, that would be jumping in line too, right?
Yep, that's right. That's right. So we'll set that up sooner than later. Yep. Go ahead.
So as Director Finance mentioned, we've been working on the capital budget. Dave has given us lots of, lots of things on, on the list, and there, there are others beyond, beyond that. We've been looking at the numbers in terms of making sure that we, we know exactly where we are and putting ourselves in a position to bring something reasonable forward. But we will, we will have a meeting and present to you within the next couple of weeks, a capital, a multi-year capital budget. And from that list, I suspect you'll be able to pull one, two, or three projects, perhaps out of there, that we would, we would advance to the federal and provincial governments for, for funding.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ken?
Thank you, Deputy Jim. Sounds like a bad Dodge day. Just saying. Just a question through, through the deputy mayor, to staff, through Jeff, through Dave. One thing that's been on the radar over the years has been the replacement of our sewage treatment plant. Are we fairly close to shovel-ready on something like that for funding? Where do we stand on that?
I don't think the date for upgrading is due until 2030, 2040. Heard me?
2040.
2040. We've got a little bit of time. No, there's no, there's no design.
Yeah, the plant, you know, the plant is operating fine. In fact, we're, we're at times operating within compliance of the, of the new standards. But on average, we are not. So the new standards being those that most municipalities will have to reach by 2020 or 2030. Because of the quality of the effluent that comes out of our plant, we're not until 2040. And so we're engaged primarily through, through Mr. Chetwyn, the operator, with the federal government around what our plan is to do that. I don't expect it's going to be 2040, we're going to drop, you know, millions and millions of dollars on the plant. I think as we get closer to that time, some components may need replacement. And, and if we're putting aside the money for that, then, you know, for the big, the big fix or big replacement, we'll probably spend some of that money in advance on, on particular components.
You gotta give me the button, you gotta give me the finger.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to get Ken turned off.
Okay. He's hard to turn off. Once he gets started. Not like me, I, not like me, I don't want to shut up.
I apologize, Ken. I'll, you can come back.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor, Jeff, we had some discussion yesterday around the table with Natalie and Caroline, that's something, Caroline, about the, the transit, transit itself. Now there's going to be roughly around 15 stops, 15 shelters being built. That's roughly around $150,000, $150,000 if they're $10,000 each, probably a little more. We're also looking at the bus, the transit being a success, which every indication that it is. So we were looking at, perhaps looking at where this money is coming federally. We should really look at, to see how we could convince the federal government, because they're all hyped up on transit and whatever. The federal, that's all you hear when you hear it on the news, read the paper about transit. Now, we already have one. We should be perhaps, just the thought, it was around the table, we should be looking for financial help assistance for number two bus and probably the shelters and whatever else we can get as part of the transit system. So you're looking at probably a half a million dollars that if we could get funding for that, to have that second bus, the shelters, and whatever else goes with transit, like employees or whatever, for a year, two years, whatever, whatever we can get. So we're, I'm going to run that by us. Should we talk about that now, or should we talk about that at our meeting when we meet with our federal M P? I think now is the time probably to get it on the table. And if we need a motion, my colleague to my right is prepared to make a motion that we, we look at doing that particular thing. It was already discussed yesterday, but we forgot to put it on the agenda. So that's my question.
All right. Thank you, Danny. Jeff?
So if you'd like to refer the, if you'd like to refer that to the capital budget discussion, that would be appropriate. And we can, we can slot it in. And as you, as I said, when we, when we present those, those items, you know, there will be some that will be perhaps more attractive or, or less sexy to, to refer to the federal government as, as requests and some to the provincial. Free money?
Free money? It's sexy, I mean.
Okay.
Counselor Ken?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, we, Counselor Mckayzick's standing on. We did discuss this at length yesterday during the Transit Steering Committee. And I would like to make a motion that we refer to staff to explore the new, the initiatives under the new federal infrastructure, federal transportation infrastructural renewal grants that they have currently announced in the federal budget yesterday. We explored this with the idea of trying to use parts of it for the expansions that we're looking at for our transit system in the Towne Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion around the table? Here we, here we know discussion, question on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Next on the agenda is the recreation report. And Frank is not here, so we'll move on to the economic development report. And Natalie, hi Natalie.
I'll, thank you. I'll first answer any questions related to my report, and then I have two short presentations to make.
Any comments or questions of Natalie's month of report? It's a very busy, very productive report. It is. All right, then, thank you very much, people around the table. Carry on, Natalie.
It's always good to type in the right password. I'd like to first, if you wouldn't mind, invite General Manager of YASTA, Neil Mackenzie, to co-present on the small ship, small cruise industry opportunity.
Hi Neil.
So, so part of this presentation sort of came about, Neil can speak to some background from the YASTA perspective, but came about out of the Silver Economy Summit. This is one of the presentations. And Counselor Madeline Dawes was able to attend that one. We sort of split up ourselves during the conference. And I also had an opportunity to speak to Geraldine McDonald, who is the Director of Economic and Community Development for the Town of New Glasgow. Economic and Community Development for the Town of New Glasgow, to really understand their story and their successes and what they hold for the future in this area. So maybe we'll flip backwards and forwards, and you can do the background on the process, Neil?
Sure.
Okay. So am I going to flip to the next one? Sorry, I put two slides in there. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the market, and Neil will drop in if I miss anything. So this is an excerpt from a presentation that Geraldine and her partner at the Tourism Board, they're made. One is, they acknowledged the small ship cruise industry is a really fast-growing segment of the cruise industry. And they've noted that research says the baby boomers are actually one of the largest segment that's actually, that's using this mode of transportation to enjoy the Atlantic provinces. So it accounts for more than 80% of the dollars spent on luxury travel, and seniors are...
Sorry.
You okay?
Yep.
Seniors account for the largest of that travel group. They're spending their money on travel more than any other activity, including health and retirement, so those that can afford it. The small market is forecasted to grow by 18%, and I think, you know, we haven't even tapped into that market as yet. The advantages is that small ships are able to visit rural ports and create an opportunity for economic spinoff. Ports are less crowded, and they provide easier access to experiences at a much calmer speed. And small ports have the ability to connect closely with passengers. Wanted to share with you, because we're here about economic benefit. One is, it does, and it has demonstrated increase in tourism revenue. It has a direct revenue in regional and local goods and services. This group particularly has a tendency to spend more money for products in the port. And maybe, Neil, you can speak a little bit to the profile of this particular group.
Thanks Natalie. I don't have the exact profile of the traveler that would be on board the vessels, but the general trend is that these passengers are looking for learning experiences, cultural experiences, looking for rural situations or ports very similar to what Yarmouth has, which allows them to peruse and experience the destination without actually having to deal with the crowds or 4,000 people on the waterfront. So they want a cruise experience, but they also want to be able to do it at their own pace.
If you can speak to the Picto story, and then I'll follow up at the back end with the Yarmouth County opportunity.
Sure. So Picto, as Natalie mentioned, and was referenced at the Silver Economy Summit, they were also referenced at the Tyance Summit in November. Some of you actually attended that. And Tourism Industry of Nova Scotia, sorry. They, Picto County did a presentation there where they actually expressed the process that they went through to attract small cruise ships to their port. It's been a long process for Picto, but as you know, they're a similar rural town like us, and they've been able to attract nine vessels last year. The good news with regards to Picto is that they've laid out a path that we can all follow. And it should take us a lot less time than it took Picto to achieve the success they've had. The good news that Yarmouth has is that we're actually receiving vessels already without actually being, actually marketing to them. The bad news is that we're not really taking advantage of the opportunity that exists when they arrive. And we don't have a lot of lead time, and the infrastructure is also a key piece that needs to be dealt with.
So one of the things that Picto pointed out with regards to last year's numbers is they received nine ships, two in May, two in June, and then the balance in the fall. And on average, some of the ships, they could actually take up to about 250 passengers, but Geraldine said on average, they saw 200 passengers each. So that's about 1,800 people in the season. So they currently have very strong bookings for the 2016 season, and they tend to see more of the bookings now going into the fall season so that travelers can see our beautiful fall trees, colors, I guess. So the Yarmouth County opportunity, and the reason why we say Yarmouth County is that all of us have the opportunity to be rewarded if this gets up and going, but more especially the town because of just where the port's located. So we're poised, as I've mentioned here, by our location for such a tourism experience. And we want to be added as part of the full circle of port stops. So today, you've got Picto, Bedak, St. Andrews by the day, by the bay, sorry, and then Digby, and I believe there might be a stop in Shelburne that might be happening, and then Annapolis Royal. So Yarmouth is poised to be on there, and we want to be there. As Neil mentioned, we've got many high tourism quality experiences. The town is investing in infrastructure to make it a destination, a true international port that anyone would be proud to step on and spend some time. And maybe, Neil, you can speak to the last point on the slide.
Thanks Natalie. So we have met, we've just been doing initial pitches to many partners, because if this effort would require several layers of partners involved, and that would be certainly the Town of Yarmouth, Yarmouth and Canadian Shores Tourism Association, the port through the Industrial Commission would have to be involved, because there's definitely an infrastructure component to this. The Chamber of Commerce would have to be involved, because there's also a key role that they need to play. And certainly your economic development, and also the economic development partners in the municipalities. Waterfront development as well. And we have done initial meetings, so we've had a, basically a one get-together where we had representatives from the Chamber and Economic Development, and the Industrial Commission, and myself. And we discussed the idea, just to make sure everyone was kind of on the right page, to say, is this something we want to do? Is this something you support? Because it's going to take a couple of years, two or three years, to actually make this happen. And that's the steps that need to take, basically, in the beginning, is we need to make sure the partners that are, that need to be involved are supportive. And that's where we're at today. So we had, I actually presented to the Chamber last night, Natalie was there. They've decided to assign somebody to work with us on this initiative, so we have the Chamber on side. They did that through a motion. I've reached out to the waterfront through Deputy Mayor McLeod, but we haven't been able to meet yet, but I'm sure we will. We'll probably present to them at some point, and we'll probably present to the Industrial Commission as well, to, they need to be on side, so that would be the next step, and that's why we're here today.
So in adding, we would like to seek approval from council to direct staff to prepare and present at a later date to be announced, business case report on the Yarmouth's small cruise ship opportunity. Any questions? We're here.
Thank you very much Natalie and Neil. Counselor Ken.
No, thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Yeah, last year at the Tyance Conference, Counselor Mooney, myself, and Mackay, we did attend Darylin's presentation there. It was really good. It was very interesting. I talked to her afterwards, I remember talking to you Neil after talking to her. There was a concern, she expressed that we're not really out there, if you know what I mean, with the Small Ports Association as to a potential stop point. And there was a matter of getting the word out that we are where we are, and what we can do, and what's available, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know how that can be resolved, but that's a YASTA issue.
Well, as I mentioned, Picto has a real path that they've drawn out for us, and they've certainly been great in sharing all the pitfalls that they've gone through and the benefits, the things that they've walked through. The first step is getting the partners on side, which is what we're trying to do now. Secondly, the next step would be to do what's called a port readiness session, which is basically getting about 18 people together, certainly the stakeholders and other key players, to discuss what is needed at the port to attract the vessels. And once you do that, once you go through that step, and this step certainly is the first step that the province recommends too, through their provincial cruise sales department. Mrs. Murphy, I believe her name is, recommends that the first thing any port should do is this port readiness procedure. And that identifies the needs of the port in relation to attracting small cruise ships. Once you've done that, then you can work at getting some familiarization tours from some of the executives from some of the cruise ships to actually visit the port. You can, certainly YASTA's role at that point would be to actually help design experiences for the tour operators, which will sell to the ships, so that the experiences are something that the passengers want to buy when they book that passage on the ship. And then there's multiple other things that need to come together, like the infrastructure, the downtown, economic development, all these things. So that's really the first step, is getting everyone on side, and then doing this port readiness program.
All set, Ken?
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Counselor Madeline.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor. I know that, speaking with Geraldine and Cindy, they are really excited that we would be part of the Cruise Nova Scotia. They're looking forward to it expanding, and from what they themselves have already gone through over the years before, while they started, we already have a lot of that in place. They kept rhyming off what they've been doing, and they've been doing a lot of this, they've been doing a lot of preparatory work on their own time. And we already have so much in place. So they are excited that we are also interested in being part of this. So hopefully, I know it takes two years to get on the agenda, but you never know. With all the stakeholders jumping in, who knows? You could do some magic, and it won't take that long.
The good news is, as you mentioned, is that we have, already have vessels arriving, so the Saint Laurent has already arrived. I don't know if that vessel's still operating, but there's six cruise lines that actually operate small vessels that tour around Nova Scotia.
Yes.
And so there's opportunity to attract them. But as you said, we're already, we already have, for example, Customs at our border here. We already have the ability to set up an infrastructure and some security down there to, for people to disembark the vessel. And we already have vessels arriving, and we're not actually in the game yet, so.
Yeah.
We've already got a few things, hurdles we've crossed.
Well, when I approached them on, they said, Yarmouth, you had already gotten in touch with them. And then I mentioned it to Counselor Dennis, and she says, yeah, yeah, YASTA's already gotten in touch. So I can see the wheels are starting to move, and hopefully they will just start going. So I would, I would, I would, I'd be honored to make the motion to seek approval, or rather from a motion for council to direct staff to prepare and present at a later date to be announced, a business case report on Yarmouth's small cruise ship opportunity.
Seconded by Counselor Sandy. That motion satisfactory to everybody around the table?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Next, under business.
Sorry, I just got one more presentation.
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
Sorry. This one will not be very long. So continuing. So the next short presentation is just my report and recommendation from the Silver Economy Summit. The summit was initiated by the Town of New Glasgow in partnership with Nova Scotia's Department of Seniors. It took place last, the week before last. And in attendance, I attended on behalf of staff, with also counselors Phil Mooney, Madeline, and Sandy Dennis there as well. There were a lot of very interesting breakout workshops, seminars, keynote speakers, and I believe some of the counselors are putting together their report on the sessions that they attended. But what I wanted to share with you is that, what were the goals of the summit, which I think are key to us as an Atlantic province, the province of Nova Scotia, and certainly our town and region. And some of these elements are part of our planning strategies, our economic development plans, programs, and initiatives. So I think we're pretty consistent. We had an opportunity to do a bit of a review amongst ourselves post the session, the summit. And we identified some takeaways that we could actually implement today, or that we can use as an opportunity to refresh ourselves, are we ensuring that some of these goals are being met? And so we identified some. One was that we felt that it was important for us to identify, if not develop, a town age-friendly strategy and plan. There is money out there, we were told by the Mr. Simon. But there is more investigation on this, but this is a recommendation I'm making at the end of the presentation. We're in the process of starting to review our municipal planning strategy, so although Caroline has made sure that elements of that is in there, we want to take, as we go through this final review opportunity, to make sure that it is fully comprehensive to achieve some of that. We also identified some of the themes that came out of the summit was that as, in the next 20 to 40 years, our population, the average population age will extend beyond 100. It'll be more the average of 100 to 120 years. And so as we're retiring at 55, some of us, not me, and 65, we have this asset in our communities that we need to reinvest in. And so the theme of senior mentoring and seniorpreneurship and developing this economy was really one of the keys takeaway. And so Startup Canada Halifax, I had the opportunity, we had the opportunity to meet the co-founder Jeff Hamlin. And this is an initiative that he would like to see grow, is how we can work towards creating a model for seniorpreneurship and seniors mentoring. We also want to share with local businesses, there were many, there were some breakout sessions with looking at innovative design for that segment of our community, and how we can become more inventive, and then link local businesses to international businesses. So we'll be one-on-one, making contact there. At the bottom, I wanted to share with you, although some of you were not able to be there, there is the direct link to the website, and you can see all of the presentations. So if you ever have a chance, I think it's a really interesting read. So a recommendation that I would like to put to council is to seek your approval to direct staff to prepare a report for a presentation in the May Committee of the Hold for the Development of a Town Age-Friendly Strategy and Plan.
Counselor Madeline.
I thought it was council.
Was that the last time? Sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Ken.
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't know what brave soul around the table is going to go with this one, because I know that when I brought it up, the pitchforks and torches came out. It was not a lot of, I think the comment was, what, we don't even know of a community of old people? I think it resonates in my ears. And definitely, that's not the intent here. I mean, I think when you guys, we went through it, Counselor Mackay, and I, and Mooney, we attended the one in Halifax, which was excellent. And what you have in your report is dead on the money. We have incredible talent in our aged people. Just look at our Deputy Mayor, for example. You know?
He's in the prime of his life, too.
Prime, absolute prime. That's what his wife says. Anyway, no, but the bottom line is, no, there's incredible talent here among our seniors, which we're not using well, or we're not encouraging to be used well, and it's nice to see that. So I think it's excellent. So definitely, and we have discussed this before, and it is, it is something we need to do. So I would have absolutely no problem to move this motion. That staff be directed to prepare a report for presentation at the May 2016 Committee of the Hold on the Development of a Town Age-Friendly Plan, Strategy and Plan. And I think we're going to be applying, my understanding, there's funding available through the Municipal Affairs Department for this, I believe? There's some dollars kicking around.
Nova Scotia Department of Seniors, up to $20,000.
There's some dollars kicking around, so we definitely want to go on the hunt for that. Yep. To work with them as closely as we can, because we are definitely already a very age-friendly community. I mean, what we've done is amazing, you know, very, very good, very positive.
Thank you, Ken. So we have a motion by Ken, and seconded by Phil. All those in favor? Any more questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. So next on the agenda is... So next on the agenda is 7A, a request for decision support of our, for air service. Jeff?
I'd like to refer that to in camera, please.
Okay. So we're going to move that into in camera. 7B is fireworks. Jeff?
Thank you, Your Deputy Worship. So the question is coming from Frank Grant with Yarmouth Recreation. He traditionally applies for and arranges for the annual fireworks at Canada Day. The question he was posing to me, and I thought I would pose to you, is assuming we want to continue to have fireworks at Canada Day and partner with Heritage Canada on that, do we want to invite the other municipal units to participate in that venture?
So any comments on Jeff's presentation? Ken?
Your Worship, Your Deputy Worship, I brought this up before, years ago. New to some people around the table, but you know, the most amazing town for fireworks that I've ever seen was Bar Harbor, Maine. And Bar Harbor, Maine has in every store, and we have some merchants around the table, little tin cans, which I understand you can get in the valley with little slots in them, and they're all wrapped and it says Firework Fund, for people to put their loose change in. Now realize it becomes an administrative burden, but it might be something that Frank's group, or maybe Yazda or somebody may be interested in, that to kind of coordinate these little tin cans, as long as they don't run out the door with eager shoppers who put them in their shopper bags. Yeah, maybe need to nail them to the counter or whatever, I don't know. But they raised enough money for their fireworks every year that way, because people just put their change and loose bills in there. And it's a, it's a thought, you know, to, maybe we should look at encouraging that, maybe something through the Chamber of Commerce. Because every year, Frank goes out and raises a fair chunk of change from Heritage Canada for the fireworks in the vicinity of 10, 12. A good show is $10,000, $12,000 to run a show. CIO may want to give more meat to that than what I have, but I know from the 250th, we had a fairly good show and I think that was around 18 grand, if I'm not mistaken. And that didn't last that long. That was what a 15-minute show. It's amazing how fast you can burn money with fireworks. It's like literally burning money.
Or sitting here.
Yeah, or sitting here.
Thank you, Ken. Counselor Danny.
Just thank you, Deputy Mayor. We had an interesting discussion last year, or the year before, sitting around the waterfront development table. We had a meeting and Bobby Newell come up with a great idea, and he's, he mentioned it a few times, actually, about fireworks competition. You know, like maybe Barrington would be into it, or right across Nova Scotia, Barrington, Shawburn, Digby, could be municipal units, or it could be anybody that does fireworks or anything. You have a first, second, or third prize, you get prizes and that. And he made, that made a lot of sense. It could be, it could be like a weekend event or whatever, right? In the town of Yarmouth. And he come up with some really good ideas and he brought it forward and he said, what do you think of it? I said, probably be a great idea, but there has to be more research, more work done. I don't know if this is the year to do it, but it might, might be something to consider or something to think about when we're sitting around the waterfront development. Jim, I bring this up because he had brought it up, maybe the last year or the year before. And it might be something to look at, maybe put on the agenda, something we could, we could do or look into with our experts that we have sitting around the table. Maybe we can come up with some sort of a theme or something like that. So I'll bring it to your attention and I know that you'll jot that down and perhaps put it on our agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Dan. Just remind me, just a comment, and then Ken, Jeff's suggestion that we work with the other two municipal units and Ken's suggestion that we put counter, you know, a coin, you know, just a container on the counter. I know we've done that before also for not only fireworks, but for other reasons, too. So we can do that. Ken?
I was just going to say, Deputy Mayor, that whole project of fireworks competition was, been a dream of Gary Cahoon's for a year. I think we all know around this table that Gary's the supplier of all the small home fireworks that are sold locally through a lot of the stores. And Gary and I have chatted in the past and he's very willing to work with us on that or anybody on it to put it on. He said it could become an Atlantic premier event. I know we have Neil McKenzie, or he was here in the audience, maybe something Yazda may want to grab upon, I don't know. But it does have a lot of potential. Fireworks are a very popular thing and his idea was to give some safety workshops and stuff like that. And the idea is that they'd fire them from barges in the harbor, you know, that sort of thing. And that's what they kind of had in mind with it, so it would be a really spectacular event, you know.
So we should take that conversation, Ken, to heart. Counselor Madeline.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Not to put my colleague on the spot, but I think the fireworks tin can donations idea, that's not bad. And our retail representative here on Council, I would, I'd feel comfortable passing it on to her and maybe discuss that with her, with her fellow retailers along Main Street or anywhere, anywhere here in town, and then you can get back to us on it, on how they feel and if there's a future in that.
So that can become an add-on, too. So we should give direction to Jeff at this point. There's no motion yet. Jeff just talked about fireworks and wanting to perhaps share the cost of the, of the firework display with the other two municipal units. Do I need more than that? Okay, moved by Counselor Madeline.
My thinking is, to Counselor Dawes, is this would be a good thing for the Chamber of Commerce to pair up with, you know, to get involved with Frank on this, because they are, they have been approached by CFest to take a more active role with CFest. And this is something that maybe the Chamber may want to jump on, because they could be a great resource in this, because many of their members are going to be businesses downtown. And to me, I think it's very doable. From what I understand in Bar Harbor, they raise a lot of money this way for their fireworks. And, you know, it's, if we can raise money somehow, great. I mean, most people have lots of change at the end of a transaction and they'd love to give it to somebody, especially something that they can see later on.
So Ken, I think that's admirable and we should do that. We should give direction to Jeff at this point and then, and then could pass this information along to the bodies that you people, or groups you people have talked about.
I'll make that a motion.
Yes. But I, that's why I think we not add that.
Okay.
We not add that to the motion.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I can make a motion if you want to. Make a motion that staff arrange to meet with the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce to see if there's any way that some local collection can be set up to help defer the cost of fireworks at Canada Day or other events in the town of Yarmouth through the Chamber of Commerce members. And then Jeff, hearing the discussion we had today, would know when he meets with Matthew what we're having in mind and we can go on that agenda. Okay? That's my motion. Counselor?
All right. Seems a little bit disjointed, but I think we're okay now. I think we're all set. Any more discussion?
It was not motioned on floor.
It wasn't seconded? No. So all those, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried.
So the other one, Jeff, that wasn't seconded was the asking the municipal leaders.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make, we introduce a motion that we ask the Mrs. Pally, Haragall, from Mrs. Pally, Yarmouth, to share the fireworks cost for the year 2016.
Seconded.
All right, we have all kinds of seconders. Just choose one. Any more question?
No.
Question? I'll let Lynn to pick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. C, 7C, kindness business meter update. Jeff?
Yeah, I just, I'd sent out a note, I believe, earlier this week, just indicating that my scouring, the listserv for a used and functioning parking meter for the purpose was unsuccessful in turning up a single parking meter. So a suggestion would be to the Yarmouth Community Fund that if you, if you agree with, and clearly you do, agree with the concept, that you make that your motion, provided they're able to find a parking meter to, to have installed.
I'll make the motion, I'll pass it on to the next, the next name.
So it's moved by Madeline, seconded by Counselor Phil. Any more questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. 7D is a request for decision on our dog park.
So at the December meeting of Committee of the Whole, a local community member presented to Council a proposal to turn 28 Jarvis Street into a community dog park. Council moved that staff be directed to investigate turning 28 Jarvis Street into a community park in consultation with residents in the area to allow dogs to run off-leash or on-leash and provide a recommendation to Council within 90 days. This is, I've, I've put together a report and a public participation plan as part of this, and I just wanted to check in with Council and make sure that this is what was intended by the motion and how you would like staff to proceed. What I've recommended is that a letter be sent to residents in the area of the Jarvis Street property, so those living on Jarvis Street, Argyle Street, and Southeast Street, advising them about the possibility of this being turned into a park and directing them to an online survey or to contact the planning department to give feedback. And also advising them of a public meeting that I would like to hold in their area to discuss the project with them. I'm also proposing the online survey, that it be not only put out to Jarvis Street residents about the idea of turning this Jarvis Street property into a dog park, but also that it be sent out to the general public, just asking about their support for a dog park, if they would use it, if they're not in support of the Jarvis Street as a location, why is that? And where else they would be interested. And a draft of that survey is included as part of the report. And I'm proposing two public meetings. One with the Jarvis Street area residents to discuss their concerns, and then a second just for the general public to talk about a dog park, the dog park concept, and if they're open to that and that they'd like to see that happen in the town. And finally, I'm proposing a newsletter be created, basically what we've done through MailChimp with other surveys for the planning department, so that members of the public can subscribe and get regular updates on the progress of the dog park as we collect more information, if they want to be actively involved or volunteer as part of the process. That that's a way to keep track of contact information for the public. So I guess my ask of Council is, is this what you were looking for and are you okay with it if I proceed?
You've done a lot of good work. Counselor Dan?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I read your report yesterday when I had my glasses today, I don't have my glasses, so I, I thank you for your report. It was, it was great and that's everything that should be done and is going to be done. So I would move that we accept the recommendations of Caroline's report and that we act upon all her reports as she presented here today.
So moved and seconded. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Caroline, lots of good work there, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll, you'll get lots of support from the, all the dog walkers I know, including So moving on in our agenda, to tax sale 2016.
Thank you. So what is being proposed here is a singular change to our tax sale policy, and I'll just read you the amendment. The Town of Yarmouth reserves the right to hold more than one tax sale each year in the event that there is a default on any tax arrears payment arrangement. In such an event, the town shall be at liberty to advertise and sell any properties eligible for the tax sale without regard to the timing of the last tax sale. So what this is intended to do is, as Council's aware, we have a tax arrears arrangement policy that allows people who are up against the wall, I guess, in terms of being, having the property at risk of going to tax sale, they can enter into structured arrangements with the town to, to make payments and those payments are due monthly. So when one of those agreements goes into default, in other words, somebody misses a payment, then we automatically begin a tax sale process. What we discussed internally is that, that we kickstart that process, but it's for a single property. And as is our experience this year, we went through a tax sale process on a regular schedule and there were several properties that did not sell at that tax sale. What this policy would enable us to do would be to add those properties to the new list and offer them for tax sale a second time within, within the calendar year. So it would not, it would not add any new properties that weren't already on, on a tax sale list that didn't sell or, or didn't go into default. It simply would reoffer those that don't sell the first time in the event, and only in the event, that somebody goes into default on a tax arrears payment arrangement.
Good preparation on the amendment. Any discussion around the table? So we're looking, Jeff, for a motion to support the changes.
Don't move.
Moved and seconded to the people on my right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your Worship, do you want to just? I have a motion, but I'm going to ask Her Worship to sit in the chair and then I'll just move off to one side for a moment.
Oh, yeah, right.
I don't know that. Okay, so we got a motion for Council at the board meeting on Wednesday for the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation. The YWDC recommends that Town Council approve a motion that an invitation be made by the three councils in Yarmouth County to the Canada Nova Scotia Offshore Petroleum Board to hold a board meeting in Yarmouth and to provide an opportunity for community groups, including the Board of the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation, to discuss with them activity that is happening now off southwestern Nova Scotia and how our region can benefit from that activity. We also recommend that Council's offer to hold a reception for the Board and senior staff with the community representatives. So we were discussing that with, this is the, the meeting that we were discussing with Bernie when, when he was in a little while ago. And we definitely, I think we definitely need to have the meeting and we also need to have Mr. Berry in attendance so that we can get all this information put in front of us.
Just, we need the motion for that, Your Worship.
We need a motion, just give me a second.
Oh, you want a second? Oh, you want to talk?
Just for a second.
I'll let you talk, you press your button. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, I didn't have the information with me, but Jeff, I can, I can get you the information. You need a name and an address. And I just can't think of who it is now, but either Dave Warner or myself will forward that information to you. So, and we need to have it for Dick Stewart, so he can go to his March 31st meeting of his group. So I'll, I'll get that ASAP.
Okay.
Make that a motion, Your Worship.
Okay, moved, seconded. Discussion?
What? Oh, you, did you want to share?
Yeah, I do, yeah, I'd like to share.
Go ahead, share.
We've, we've received a notification from the executive assistant with the District of Yarmouth that they've had a similar presentation to what we've had here, and in fact, they've, they've passed a motion to themselves to have a joint, a joint meeting of the three councils with the offshore petroleum board. So we know already they're on side. Their suggestion was, is that we actually have, as we did a couple months ago, a joint council meeting and have them present. So we can, we can work out the details with them, but just to let you know that they're on side with the initiative.
Good. Okay.
I just have one more comment, just a general comment. We're, we're, we're opening doors and I don't ever want to close a door. We're opening a number of doors in two or three areas, and this is one of them. And we get people into our town and it was an excellent presentation. we get people into our town, and it was an excellent presentation at the hotel recently, and that's where I, although I think I've known Bernie. Woodrow, I think.
Bernie Berry.
Bernie Berry. I really had a good conversation with him the other night at the Rod's Grant Hotel. So I support, thank you.
Good. Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Correspondence for action, FCM resolution, Town of Victoria, federal bill, just look that up, and I'll grab this so I can see what I'm doing. Okay. Okay, so this, did you want to speak to that, or are we good? That's Victoria unanimously, the city of Victoria unanimously passed a motion to send a resolution to the FCM and its members, the federal bill of environmental rights that council endorse. Does everybody have that?
Yeah.
Provides access to justice when environmental rights are infringed, includes provisions. What's that? Well, let's, I'm more than willing to table this to the next.
I am.
Right? I really am, we just, sort of like the, yeah, please. Thank you. Yeah, okay. You want to do it that way?
Well, if you want more information, it's just tabled, it's just set aside, if you want more information, and that's the right section, at the left of it. If you want more information, the motion should be to request more information, and we'll do that.
Okay.
And at the same time, request more information, so we can, yes.
Okay, who seconded that, did you?
Phil.
Okay, you did, okay. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna table it and then, and request more information. Okay. Anything further?
Great.
Call for the question?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Municipality of Yarmouth, re-water testing.
She, oh.
Yep, go ahead. Well, yes.
Sorry, I haven't, I'll.
Okay, Counselor Dawes? Okay, go ahead, that's it.
Okay, the letter from the municipality regarding the, sorry, my agenda's still not up, it's about the water testing. So, as you know, we have, thank you. We have urged council to follow the advice of the experts and professionals that we've hired on all aspects of this, and the one kilometer radius isn't explained in terms of the rationale. So my suggestion would be, is that you consider advising them, you know, we can write a letter that has some details in it around the professional advice that we're receiving from an environmental engineer, but part of their letter is relevant, is that it deals with results, test results, and adjusting the plan if the test results warrant, and if that is the case, that is, I'm sure what the advice would be from our, from our professional, but it's where we start that is the question. They're suggesting kind of a one kilometer, which isn't supported by our professional at this point, so I think we could respond to this respectfully and provide them with some additional information around what we're doing.
Good. Counselor Dawes?
Good. I would make the motion that we advise the municipality of the District of Yarmouth that we take Englobe's expert advice, wait for what they come back with, and if their test results cause them to advise us to expand it, to expand it, then we would advise the municipality of District of Yarmouth that we will.
Okay, good. Thank you. Moved, have a seconder?
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
To Jeff, and Jeff, nothing stops the municipality from doing their own testing if they do seem fit or do seem it's appropriate? Okay. No, that's right. So if they, if they feel that they, if it's one kilometer, two kilometers, nothing stops the municipality from going in and doing their testing if they receive permission from the owners of the property or whatever, right? Okay, good.
Good. Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Wetchport Tuna Tournament Request to Present, and, and they basically asked, they submitted the grant application in December, if we haven't made a decision, would it be possible to add this to the, to the application? So we should probably re- please, receive and place on file. So we have the, they want, okay, wait a minute now. Okay. All right. It's, someone wants to make a motion, but it's all in here. It's all in here, and it's a grant application, which means they can come in and do that during grant application time. Yeah, exactly. Yep. Yep. Yes, definitely, and it's, and it's, and it's here, but we hear them in, during our grant applications, we don't need a separate presentation, is what I'm saying. And the information is, all the information is right in that this is a great packet, it's a really good packet that they provided. Counselor Dennis?
But this year, we didn't have people speak on grant applications.
That's true. Well, no, but, yeah, because it's always, but this is, this information should have come with the application.
Before.
That's all, that's just my thought. So what do you want to do? What's the wishes?
Receive this on the.
Okay. And we also, if they want, can you turn it on?
We can write a letter explaining that we've already done our grant applications, and they are on it, and we have donated money already.
Okay, so you want to make that a motion? Okay, have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
Aye.
Okay. Previously distributed, okay, budget, garden coordinator. Go ahead, Counselor.
I did circulate, I think to staff, I think, a suggestion that was from Bridgewater, where they had a community gardens coordinator in the town of Bridgewater. We've, we've got a fair amount, excuse me, invested in our infrastructure here in Yarmouth, in our gardens and parks, and I know we've had some vacancies in parks and gardens, and parks and grounds, and I don't know if we've been proactive and maybe questioned the CAO in actually hiring somebody with a horticultural experience or gardening experience to fill some of the positions that's there, but it would be refreshing if that was the case. We have some great resources, and we've been kind of relying on volunteers a little bit over the years to advise us and to assist us in various projects. More notably right now, we're looking at a park up in Milton. So it's a suggestion that we'd, you know, we'd like to ideally look at somebody who's a points person in the town of Yarmouth as like a, not as a chief gardener, but as a person who's the coordinator of our parks and grounds, that would maybe give some long-term vision as to the direction in which we're heading. This may be something to be discussed at Communities in Bloom, I don't know, but it's something that we could easily bring up there. But many communities do have a community coordinator for gardens, et cetera, and I know under our staff right now, our staffing, the CAO can comment, I know that falls under public works, and I remember the former supervisor was kind of in there in the play on that one, and I think that we're a void of a points person now, a go-to staffer who has some expertise, especially in the gardens, et cetera. I know we, we tend to hire people who can operate backhoes quite well, but it's pretty hard to plant a violet with a backhoe, but it would be nice to have somebody who knows how to plant, and I'm assuming we've got great staff who know how to plant things, but it would be useful to, you know, get, you know, some very proactive things happening with some professional gardener of some kind. Many, many communities do have a professional gardener on staff, and I mean, we've got an incredible assortment of parks here in town, we have Frost Park, we have Beacon Park, we have all kinds of areas in town that we're very proud of, our green spaces, and we've often talked about more green in the downtown, and, you know, a proactive person would be really useful for us, so I'd like to make a motion, your worship, that staff investigate the possibility of adding to public works a community, a community gardens coordinator in part of the budget discussions for the 2016-17 fiscal year.
Staff for discussion. Counselor Mooney?
Yeah, I got a question maybe to the counselor, and I know how active he's been involved with the Communities in Bloom over the last several years. Could you almost envision this person or this position being a, maybe a contract position too? Or anything's on the table right now?
I think anything's on the table. I think the thing is, we need a points person, you know, somebody who has a little vision that we know where our gardens are going, or a place like Frost Park is going, and Beacon Park and places like that. I mean, you know, plants suddenly appear, poof, you know, in, in the traffic areas. For example, up on Stars Road, the little triangle there, you know, with the intersection, we often put plants and shrubberies in there. We had some question, I remember, with the planting of all the lilies in Milton, with the divider there, there was some concern over the amount of garbage that was being picked up, and et cetera, et cetera, and maybe we didn't make a right decision with regard to putting in rosebushes, et cetera, especially down on Water Street, which tended to be a great collection of paper and other debris that was rolling around, and became a bit of an issue to clean and that, so, but a good quality person with a good, strong horticultural experience would really be an asset to us in the town, especially as we try to visualize our town as truly a beautiful place. I mean, we've won tremendous awards, you know, nationally for our beautification projects in our town of Yarmouth, we've invested a lot of money in our, in our town, and I mean, we need a steward of our investments to make sure that what we're doing is well-planned, you know? We have a community asset program we've set up, which gives families a chance to buy things in honor of loved ones that could be planted in Frost Park, it could be planted in any of our parks, you know, for tax purposes, it would be excellent, you know, for estates, et cetera, and estate planning. There are some good benefits there, so, you know, and it's something that the public would really, our supporters and public, the electors, I think, would really like to see it as very proactive. We're all very proud of our town, and it's a beautiful town, and the more beautiful we make it, the better it is for all of us, you know? We are a tourist town, and we want people to see us as a tourist town, which they do, and this would be a, a great way of maybe having some coordinator on the ground who can work on a vision that could come from a committee like Communities in Bloom or somebody like that way. We've had an external relationship with our former Parks and Ground Supervisor, who's had our committee meetings and listened to the concerns of our residents. I mean, we've got a very active garden club here in town who has some great ideas, who've done some incredible things as volunteers, and we need to encourage more of that, because there are tremendous resource base, you know? You get people like Dan Earl, for example, who's offered to give workshops to our staff in dealing with the, with the shrubs and plants that are along Water Street, in pruning techniques and things along that line. I mean, I mean, we have a great amount of resources in our community of people who are very good and people who are professionals. I mean, you get a person like Dan, he's a landscaping engineer, I mean, he taught it. I mean, the guy's a pro. I mean, he's a great resource, you know, that we need to capitalize on and hopefully use his knowledge and talents to help, you know, our own community to get more attractive and stronger than what it is, and that would be one way of doing it, your worship.
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, a question's to you. I read your email today congratulating the two additions to staff. So the, one of the additions, if it's proper for me to ask, for Parks, is it for Parks? He was hired, Parks, is that what it was for? The gentleman, I forget the names, guy's name.
Parks Marina and Facility Coordinator.
Okay, does this guy have credentials in Parks? Is he an arbor? Is he, is he a gardener? Does he have certificates? Does he have any credentials as part, as part of his, his, his job? Does he have anything like that?
I'll, I'll say that he was the best candidate for the job.
That doesn't answer the question, though, does it?
No, and I'll answer that question in camera.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah?
Talk about the individual in camera.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, yeah, okay. In camera, I mean. Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Deputy, you're on. You were going to say something?
No, I was just going to bring up what Danny's already mentioned, so I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, that works. All right, so I, I just don't, I just, and it's not a, I just don't support it. I think we have, we have people in Parks, we have, as you said, the Yarmouth Garden Club with a tremendous amount, we've just got a lot of volunteers that we could tap into, and probably a lot of other places that we could use staff other than somebody coordinating our gardens, but that's just, I'm probably alone in that one. Okay, questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Aye. Okay, so how many, I don't, I didn't even, who he, who voted for?
I vote for Garden Coordinator.
For Garden Coordinator.
Any people?
He seconded for discussion. Okay, so it's defeated. Ferry update. So I just sent you all an email from, right from the province, with the update on the ferry. So it's in your email. It is, what's that? Yeah, and it's, it's also, it's also from Bay Ferry, it's from the province, so everybody that was involved, all that information is, is right there, so we get our ferry around about the 15th of June. 15th of June, and it, the 15th of June till the 30th of September, it is coming, this is the best news, it leaves Yarmouth at eight in the morning, goes to Portland, and it arrives back in Yarmouth at nine o'clock at night, which means we get them coming and going. Seven hundred capacity, thereabouts. They don't have any requirement for cabins, because it's just a day crossing, six hours. Trying to think of what else they covered. Covered just about a, just about everything. So that's in your, that's in your package, and it's all good news, it's great news for us. It really is. It's great news for us. Okay, anything else on that? Transit fare? Oh, we did that, we did the bus route, and a motion to go in camera. Oh, sorry.
One of the points that we were going to ask if we could, with the, sorry.
Just a request to the mayor and council, one suggestion from the Transit Advisory Steering Committee yesterday is, could we have a special council meeting right after, when we come out of in camera to approve those, pass those motions that we made before from the Transit Committee?
Yeah. Let's do that.
Yeah, good, thank you.
So a motion adjourned?
Adjourned.
Okay, call this special council meeting to order, record of attendance, any conflict of interest, and there's one or two, three items on the agenda. Okay, number one on the agenda is the bus shelters? Or are we just going to deal with the transit fare? Okay?
Fare and route.
And route, okay, so the transit with regard to the, the motion for the transit fare, the $2?
The whole.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried, and the bus route changed to entail the extra?
Two stops.
Two stops.
Yeah.
Moved and seconded, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, and the off, we'll do, okay, the offshore petroleum meeting, okay? Moved, seconded, question? Any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Motion two would go?